Will be published on the board's YouTube channel. Can I ask trustee Mazza to open with an opening prayer, please?
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. May all I do today begin with you, O Lord. Plant dreams and hopes within my soul. Revive my tired spirit. Be with me today. May all I do today continue with your help, O Lord. Be at my side and walk with me. Be my support today. May all I do today reach far and wide, O Lord. My thoughts, my work, my life, make them blessings for your kingdom. Let them go beyond today. Oh, God, today is new unlike any other day, for God makes each day different. Today, God's everyday grace falls on my soul like abundant seed, though I may hardly see it. Today is one of those days Jesus promised to be with me, a companion on my journey, and my life today, if I trust him, has consequences unseen. My life has a purpose. I have a mission. I am a link in a chain, a bond of connection between persons. God has not created me for not, therefore I will trust him. Whatever, wherever I am, I can never be thrown away. God does nothing in vain. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please stand.
Oh, sorry, I opened the wrong thing. Uh... Thank you.
II, Queen of Canada, her heirs, her successors, and that I will obey the laws of law in Canada and fulfill my duties as a Canadian citizen. There were no motions adopted in the in-camera session, and I will ask Vice Chair Murphy to read the information received in the in-camera meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following information was received in camera. Department head: Michelle Finn, appointed as department head effective September 1st, 2019, for a period of up to four years. Curriculum consultant: Patricia Dalben, appointed as curriculum consultant effective September 1st, 2019, for a period of up to three years, with the possibility of a one-year extension. Retirements: Charlene Amlinger, Paula Leggett, Catherine Mazer, Jason Riley, Joseph Scosari, retiring effective June 30th, 2019. Resignations: Rebecca Glickenson resigned effective May 10th, 2019. Clara Barra will resign effective August 31st, 2019.
Item eight. We have Policy-15: Environmental Stewardship, Brenda Agnew. Would you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I move, be it resolved, that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy V-15: Environmental Stewardship be approved as amended.
Discussion? Questions? All in favor? Okay, can I have a mover? Mr. Antomasi? Seconded?
I would second.
You were the seconded? Okay, thank you. All in favor? You want to record the vote? Okay, Patrick Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Caravella?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Mazza?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnota?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Charlebon?
In favor.
Motion carries. Item 8.2, Policy V-18: Community Engagement and Public Consultation. Trustee Agnew, would you please read the motion?
I move, be it resolved, that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy V-18: Community Engagement and Public Consultation be approved at first reading.
May I have a seconded? Seconded by trustee Antomasi. Trustee Caravella.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So, on reflection, going through the policy, I was noticing that there could be something written about our value statement and our mission, and as an amendment to add as a principle, a core, out of our core principles. So, I discussed it with the author of the policy, and... Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, one we, what we can do is add a principle, the very first principle, we can actually, and this is some suggested language, it's essentially our values, but it would read, "This policy is guided by a commitment to our Catholic faith, the whole child, excellence in learning, relationships and partnerships, and the importance of contributing to our communities." So, if we put that as the first principle, we just need to adjust, just tweak the one that's currently showing as the first, to remove relationships and partnerships, because it would be repetitive, but we could do that, if that's agreeable.
So, do we need a, we need a motion to amend? Can I have a motion to amend, please? Trustee Caravella?
Yes, I make a motion to amend, and it being as read.
Discussion? Uh, trustee O'Brien. Discussion? All in. Trustee?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a question I offer up to the group. Do all of our policies state in writing a principle, or is that assumed that all of our policies would follow our principles? So, by putting it in, is it saying the other policies don't adhere to a principle? So, every policy has this in it?
Uh, some, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Many of our policies do, not all. It's something that could be seen as we go through them, each one, that we are here, and that is the reason we're here, and so it's good to state it in the beginning as a principle, and especially doing with communications, that, you know, that, yeah, that we can communicate the core values of our faith, and that we take that into consideration.
And, so, follow-up. I completely agree. I think that that's the base of why we're here. It's just, my concern is, if we add it in, is it saying, why do we have to add it into this policy? That's all I'm bringing to the table.
Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Trustee Duarte?
I did take a look at some of our major policies, like strategic planning process, pretty major policy that we have, and it does talk about our Catholic values and this thing. So, all our major policies, yes, we do have them, and I believe it should be there.
Trustee O'Brien?
Can I, through you, Mr. Chair, can I have the amendment read again, please?
"This policy is guided by a commitment to our Catholic faith, the whole child, excellence in learning, relationships and partnerships, and the importance of contributing to our communities."
Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I, I like it simply because what, it distinguishes stakeholder feedback in a Catholic culture or community, as opposed to a public culture and community. So, I think that what Catholic is important to have in there.
Are we ready to take a vote? Okay, registered vote. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Caravella?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Mazza?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnota?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Charlebon?
In favor.
Motion carries. Item nine, staff reports. We're voting on the motion as amended. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Caravella?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Mazza?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnota?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Charlebon?
In favor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. The purpose of this report is to share and request attendance for the upcoming trade missions that are being organized by OSADI, the Ontario Association of School Districts International, and by CAPS, the Canadian Association of Public Schools International. We are members of both organizations, and we have attended very successful trade missions with both organizations in the past. So, what you will see is that we continue, as a board, in our international education strategy, to continue to try to recruit students from around the world, and to avoid one single region. We can't be putting all our eggs in one basket. We need to try to diversify, and we've been saying that for the last number of years. So, you will see this coming before you next board meeting on June 4th, to, as a resolution, to attend the three trade missions. As I said, OSADI, that has one organized for November the 18th to 21st, that goes to Milan and Istanbul, and the other two for CAPS, one going to Santiago, Chile, because we, the South American market is an area that we definitely are interested in, as well as Vietnam in January, the 12th to 16th. Just a little update, and then aside, part of it is that we know that there is real value to our board in terms of internationalizing our own school communities, and they bring much more enrichment to our communities. This year, unfortunately, we are down in our international enrollment numbers. Part of that, and that, this is how sensitive the market is, because of the various global trends and issues that we've been seeing in the news. So, we hope that moving forward in different areas and different regions, this will, in fact, bring in more international students. Open for any questions, but you will be seeing this report again as a resolution on June 4th.
Any questions? Trustee Duarte?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Question to Superintendent Penelli. I know we attended in the past. What were the tangible benefits that we obtained in the past, and has that information been documented? Has it been shared? Is it part of training? So, basically, what is the tangible thing that we gained from the past attendance?
Thank you very much for the question. What happens is when we attend one of these trade missions, and once the board gives permission, and we do attend a trade mission, there is a report that comes back, so those that were here in the past will know the number of agents that I've met with, the number of contacts and all of that, and in fact, we have tangible benefits from it. So, for example, even if we get one student from a trade mission that comes on as an international student, that will more than cover the cost of going to the trade mission. But, but we do a, a report after we've attended.
Follow-up question? Follow-up question?
Follow-up question, yes, go ahead.
Could you let us know what's the budget you estimate for each of those conferences, each of those places that we go to? What's the estimated amount that you plan to budget?
Again, each one of them is individual, but roughly, to attend, the organization will ta, will request that we pay roughly about $5,000, $6,000 for the event, because they are the ones that work with the Canadian consulate in these countries, and they will bring in the companies and agents that are reputable, so they do a lot of the screening. So, we, that's the entrance to attend, then it's airfare and hotel. So, it, again, depending on the destination, your airfare, if you get it on sale or not, but usually, it's way less, way less than it, one of the fees for one of the students.
Thank you.
Trustee Agnew?
Um, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just, how many people attend typically, and who would attend?
Requesting that it's one person, it's usually superintendent, and usually has been me, or my predecessor was superintendent Cipriano that attended. So, again, it usually is one person.
Trustee Murphy?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Penelli. What's the competition like at these conferences? Where, what is the makeup of, of the people attending and displaying?
Excellent question. It's across, so if we're going with CAPS, it's across Canada, and the competition is pretty fierce. We have competition with BC. BC has been in international education, well ahead of Ontario for many, many years. So, the West has been very much entrenched in international, and they have the highest of student population in international students, followed by Alberta, and then what you now start seeing is, as you come east, you're now getting even a lot more from the maritime. So, the competition from across, but the interesting part is, why I'm asking permission is, they pick and choose. The organization, CAPS, the Canadian one, picks and chooses from regions, so that, let's say, all of the West wants to attend, they don't allow that to happen. So, they will pick from different provinces, so there is equal kind of representation, just as there is equal representation between public, French, and Catholic. So, the last time that I was, last year, we, there were three boards in Ontario that were able to attend the Czech Republic and the Ukraine. The rest were from across Canada. So, that, that's from the Canadian. From the Ontario, the OSADI representation and association, what they do is they try to balance again Catholic, public, and French representation, so that, just because, I want to be very clear, just because we get board approval doesn't mean that we're automatically in, which is part of the issue, which, this evening is not part of what we should be discussing, but the reality is that it slows down the process. When they put this call out, if I can't answer because I need board approval, that delays our chances of being able to be put on that list.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Because that seems to be, that seems to be the trend. What are the international students looking for in, when they're making their choices? What, is there something that could make us more marketable to these students?
No question, we, we have what international students are looking for, and that is high academic achievement. So, our board does have, and is very attractive to international students from globally, from those that I've talked to, that they're very much interested in academics, because they are interested in obtaining admission to post-secondary. So, our reputation, when it comes to academics, very critical. Our, the caliber of our schools is also critical, and specialized programs, like, again, all of those are huge factors in attracting international students. And our location, we are in prime, we talk about real estate, we're in prime real estate in terms of the GTA area, close to the airport, close to Toronto, close to the US.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Just to get a perspective, and just to understand, how many international students do we currently have? Just to get an idea.
This year? Like, this current year, 2018-19, we're at 200, 215 ADEs, average daily enrollment, that's between semester one and semester two, that is for secondary, but we also have the, we have 13 elementary this year. Next year, we're, as I said, there's a dip, but we're still admitting more, but what we've seen is, for next year, our elementary has already doubled. So, we're, that's a positive for us.
Any more questions? Thank you, Superintendent Penelli. The item will be in the action report on June 4th, board meeting. Moving on, student trustees update. Go ahead, trustee Mazza.
So, the student senate applications for next year were sent out to vice principals and principals on Monday, May 13th, and they will be out until the 23rd of May. People are invited to apply on a link, which was sent out to the principals, and the student trustees, all six of us, will be meeting next week to look through them. We also have the Senate, the last Senate meeting slash leadership conference coming up on June 11th, so usually we do a last minute, a last Senate meeting, and then a leadership conference during the day, but with culminating and exams coming up, secondary school students don't want to miss a day of school, so we decided to combine them into something after school. So, by that date, Senate will be picked, and the new senators will attend. We don't have full details about it, but we're in the works of planning it, and likely it will have leadership sessions run by past senators to integrate the new Senate into their positions, to kind of show them the ropes and what to do during the coming year. Also, the six student trustees will be attending the Ontario Student Trustees Association annual general meeting this Thursday, May 23rd to May 26th, and we're really excited. Minister of Education Lisa Thompson is going to be there presenting to the General Assembly of the organization, so we'll get her a few, we'll get a chance to ask her a few questions about all the education changes and everything about that. Also, Will Denzel and I went to the Walk with Jesus on May 9th, and we did an introduction and readings, and this was a fantastic event, I just wanted to mention it, and I'm sure trustee Antomasi and a few other people that were there can speak to the power of educate, Catholic education that everyone felt that day in the belladry room. It was, it was a really great event, so, yeah, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, trustee Mazza. The next item on the agenda is school educational field trip. Superintendent McGillicuddy?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Presented for information are the approved school educational trips, and I'll take any questions at this time.
Trustee Duarte?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Question to Superintendent, uh, this, I noticed that the camp is being held in September, and there is a good reason why it's being held in September. So, question is this, in September, we normally balance the classes, and students are just coming in and settling down. Anybody going to miss that camp by, because of that?
Through the chair, historically, many of our schools have sort of team-building or class-building experience trips in their grade seven programs at many of the schools, and that's the time of year when they want to do them, when they have new classmates and are trying to create an atmosphere of mutual support and, and a sense of camaraderie within the class. So, that was the premise for the timing of these kinds of grade seven trips.
Any other questions? Thank you, Superintendent McGillicuddy. Item 10.3, 2019-2020 Budget Estimates Update: Grants for Student Needs Revenue. Superintendent Loz.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. And in front of you will see the information report relating to the revenues for the upcoming school year, the estimated revenues for the upcoming school year. I tried to break it down based on a per ADE basis, so you can see that as of the revised estimates for last year, for this current year, 1819, we're looking at, on the operation side, about $10,381 per student. This year, or this estimated for the upcoming year, we're down to $10,228. So, what does that represent? Well, that's approximately a $5.6 million change or decrease. I then went on to kind of focus on what, what was this increase? What does this look like? So, you can see that the majority of our decrease is coming from the Pupil Foundation Grant. What's the Pupil Foundation Grant? Well, that's essentially the grant that touches the classroom, so your teachers, ECEs, items such as that, but broken down there a synopsis, or a summary of what has changed. We did have one offsetting part to that decrease, and that was an increase in $87 per ADE for the ECE's supply cost. Another big loss in revenue was the removal of the Learning Opportunities Grant, which was part of the last collective agreement, and that was about $3.5 million, or about $97 per student per ADE. What about the positive impacts? Well, we do have a positive impact. We have the teacher and ECE qualifications allocation, which increased $271 per ADE. Now, what's in this? Well, this is the, part of the attrition funding that we've been hearing about, as well as the STEM funding, and the impact of essentially the Q&amp;E grant, which is the qualifications and edu, and experience grant, which kind of stabilizes our teacher costs. Another big increase was the special education grant, and I say big increase, I mean that there was an increase in the DESNA, so the differentiated special ed needs amount of about 5% or $820,000, as well as the, you might have heard too, in the budget, they mentioned about the ABA, the Applied Behavioral Analyst, essentially, it doubled in that area as well by about $230,000. Another one is our transportation allocation. Now, this can be a little misleading. We have an increase of $29 per ADE. A big chunk of that, or a big portion of that, was an $800,000 stabilization amount that we received this year. We are still forecasting a deficit in our education, or in our transportation line, but again, we're still working through all the numbers. Finally, our school operations increased, and this was part of the, the release before, by about 2% or $9 per ADE. Now, we're still working through a couple of things. We're still working through our expenditures, as well as we're still waiting for our technical papers to be released. We have yet to receive the technical papers. What are the technical papers? Technical papers are basically the behind-the-scenes, they kind of go back and calculate these values. So, right now, we're using our EFIS reporting tool to generate the revenues, and then we're comparing that, but it'd be nice to have those technical papers that go in there and see exactly what's making up those values. On the expense side, like I said, we're still working through that, but right now, we're looking at about a million-dollar deficit at this stage, and we're still working through with senior admin team to, to at least bring some more, when we meet with you next week, and bring some more substantive numbers, so we can discuss and go through it further.
Trustees Zarnota?
Superintendent Loz. So, stabilization, stabilization funding for transportation, what exactly does that mean?
Yes, stabilization, that, what that is, is basically, we're getting rewarded for running an efficient transportation consortium. So, we as, us, as well as the public board, our terminals board... So we as, us, as well as the public board, Terminus Board, have received funding from the ministry because we do run an efficient transportation consortium. So it's essentially a reward for running a efficient operation.
And a follow-up question, technical papers, like who are we waiting on?
The ministry.
What's taking them so long?
I don't know.
Simple question, yeah. What, like, is this normal for this time of year?
It's, it's not normal, no.
So what, can we do anything?
Every board, all 72 of us are waiting as well. So it's not just our board, it's the entire province is waiting on it.
So you're saying misery loves company, that's what you're saying?
Essentially, in that case, yes, Trustee, I am. I don't have, I know we've heard from the ministry last week, some other senior business officials, and the response is we're still getting them prepared. So, but the good part is we do have the EFIS documents, so that has helped us at least go in there and look at what our revenue is and such, and kind of do a better forecast in that sense. So we do have some, some good news there. But no, this is, this is a lot, usually the end of March is when we get this information, so.
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And about the transportation, the 4% enhancement, is the, so what, what monetary value is the 4%?
It would be about 4%. From a dollar perspective, it would be, I guess, around $400,000 or so. I think we're up about 1.2 million in aggregate in total, 1.2, 1.3 million in aggregate. So it's about 4% of our previous allocation. But then our busing costs have gone up as well, so it's.
Just a follow-up, and all the transportation funding we get has to be used for transportation?
We do, yes, we have to, and we're in a deficit, we're forecasting a deficit on our transportation side. Not as large a deficit, because we did get the extra $800,000 this year, but we still are in a deficit in transportation, we're forecasting anyways, so.
Trustee Murphy.
What's the impact on the budgeting schedule? There's very firm dates where you have to submit documentation, so not having the technical papers, what state does that put you in?
It makes it difficult, without a doubt, especially in a year of, of a lot of change in the budget process. You're correct in that we're supposed to have our budget approved, our approved budget by the end of June. Ministry requests that by the end of June. Worst-case scenario, we could ask for permission for extension if we get into any kind of issues. The province has understood as well that it's, what it's asking for sometimes is, and in this case, in this deadline, is very, is very tight. So worst-case scenario, we could go beyond, but we're still aiming for that end of, end of June.
Trustees Anotta.
Chair, so the 4%, I want to go back to that. Because it, it reads as it's amazing, 4% enhancement to the student transportation grant. Well, gas has gone up, what, 20% over year over year? So do you think that's a wash, or it still puts us in the negative, even with the 4%?
We're, sorry, we're still in the negative. I think we were forecasting our expenditures. Now, this is coming from the consortium, so our group, and it's about a 5%, 5.6% increase in expenses versus our 4% increase. Now, granted, we do have that extra $800,000, which helps us as well. So that's over and above the 4%. So, so it does, thankfully, we do have that this year. It's kind of helped cushioning us. We're still in that deficit, but again, the, it was a much larger one in the past.
I have a question. On the revenue side, all the ups and downs, where do we end up when you put them all together?
Where do we end up? Just looking on the operational side, we're looking at about $373 million on the operational side. That was still the cap.
But all of the decreases, all the decreases and the increases?
Yeah.
What's the net result when you put them all together? Are revenues going up or going down?
Oh, our revenues are theoretically, they're going up.
Up?
Because we're, where we're going down, where I have the 5.6% going down, I think we're up about 3.9 million over the revised estimate.
Okay.
And a pure aggregate number, the only difference is, we have a lot more students that we have to service with that value.
Right, right. On a personal basis, we're probably.
We are going down.
We've got less resources.
Definitely.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Annual Safe Schools Initiative Seminar, Reboot 2019, Preventing Targeted School Violence and Lessons Learned. Superintendent Crowell.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Please provide an information report on a recent conference that I attended, along with one of our secondary school vice principals, who's one of our trainers for our Violent Threat Risk Assessment, training that we do for our secondary school administrators, our elementary school administrators, social workers and CYCs. It was hosted by the US Secret Service. We were invited to, to attend with the Houghton Regional Police as we partner with them around safe schools and threat risk assessment. So provided an overview of the one-day conference, and then please answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Trustee Martin.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Understand it was a great conference, so what do you bring back from that, and what are we changing in our procedures, policies, or whatever?
I think what was the best learning for me was that it was validating a lot of the work that we've already done. So my predecessors, Superintendent Cipriano and Superintendent Penelli, done a lot of work over the years on establishing a very coherent threat risk assessment. We also are, are community partners, so we share the same document with the public board, with the police, with children's aid, with Houghton Health, so that we're all speaking the same language, and we have concerns about a student or a threat that's been made, and we have very, we have the same protocols to follow and working together. So there are other boards in Ontario, and there are other, many regions in the states that are just starting this threat risk assessment work, where we're already nine to 10 years ahead of that.
Trustee Murphy.
Could you speak to the, the perceived threats, or to weigh it, we're, you know, we're talking a lot about threats from within the school with, with at-risk youth. What about the threats, external threats? And is there something physical we need to look at in our school design moving forward? Barriers at the entrance, those types of things? Is that, was that discussed at all during this conference?
Not specifically. One of the things that we always try to balance, as you know, all of our elementary schools are locked at all times, right, require the buzzer system. One of the things that we try to find a balance of is being sure that our schools are safe, but also accessible to parents or other community members. It's something that we continue to review, again, with the police. We have a current, our current police protocol is from 2016, and there's work under, undergoing, work that will be undergoing hopefully this summer with the police to update and revise that protocol. That'll be part of that discussion, so that's the table by which we would discuss those, those types of issues.
Thank you Superintendent Crowell. Do you have a question? Sorry, okay. Moving on to the next item, construction report, Assumption Catholic Secondary School. Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, presented the construction report for the Assumption School addition project for April. Work is moving along well, with structural steel installations going on, we have new lockers going in, new lighting is continuing, you can see the new boilers there being installed. The next month, we get more into masonry walls on the new addition, that starts to take form. Happy to take any questions that trustees may have on the Assumption project.
Any questions, anyone? Thank you Superintendent Merrick. Moving on to the next item, which is Saint Nicholas Catholic Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, presented the construction report for the Saint Nicholas School Construction Project for April. Work is progressing still on the first floor masonry, structural steel, you can see it in some of the photos there being lifted into place, that was taking place last week. And then today, we have the precast concrete for the second floor going in, so it's starting to look very different as the second floor goes on. And next month, moving into the masonry for the second floor, as well as some of the more of the slab for the, the front portion of the school. Again, happy to take any questions that trustees may have on the Saint Nicholas project.
Any questions? Thank you. Superintendent Merrick. The next item, under miscellaneous information, the minutes of April 9th, 2019 Policy Committee are provided for your information. Under correspondence, we have a letter from Ms. Lorenko that has also been provided for your information. Do we have any questions, Rosie, on the open question period? No questions. We do not have to move in, back in camera. I need a resolution re-absenteeism regarding trustee Guzzo and trustee Araro. They have a motion? Trustee Agnew, trustee Duarte, all in favor? Motion passes. May I please have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Agnew, trustee Zarnota, all in favor? I will close with a closing prayer. In the name of Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Dear God, you have called us to, to lead. There are times when we feel overwhelmed and unsure. We look into the eyes of our colleagues and think, how can we do this? Help us to know that we are doing your will. Give us the sense of peace that is born of knowing that you are with us. Give us the sense of love that is born of forgiveness and communion. May we always remember you are our strength and our leader. We make, we make this prayer through our leader, our teacher, our companion, Jesus. In the name of Father, Son, Amen.